Actually, we'll be calling this meeting to order. I'm sorry that it is this late. I called myself trying to log in ahead of time. And here we are, so. Discussion item, we have just one. All right.
No.
So, look, can we just go into a different direction super fast? Because since we're all together anyway, just to discuss the email that was going about the place, DiMaggio's place, real fast, do you mind? Anyone? Any objections?
No, no objections. I was just reading that.
Okay, so I just saw all of the emails that came from Scott and from Jill. So, and I'm hoping that everybody else will feel the same way as I just think that, and just reiterating what Bruce and I already sent, the fact is I think that we should lax the signage while we are in this, you know, the COVID situation. And then what I did like, and this is where I'm asking for your opinion, is that after we get an "all is clear" or whatever, give a two-week period for everyone to get the signs off, or signs up, or signs down, or however you want to call it. Your thoughts?
Can you explain the issue a little bit? I don't think I got any of those emails.
Yeah, everybody's on the email. It's about, go ahead.
The initial one, I think everyone was on.
They were.
And then when I responded, I took off three of the council members because I didn't want to have, for this very reason, if we're having a discussion about it at a meeting, we can't be discussing it via email thread. So, the underlying issue has been the increase in the size and the number of signs, primarily temporary signs, for restaurants and then this particular business that's owned by Mr. DiMaggio. He has a sign that, I believe, something to the effect of "cash for gold." And so, he was contacted by the code enforcement officer with respect to having that sign, as well as having, I think there was some debris, construction material in his parking lot that he needed to clean up. And his response to the signage was that he felt he was being targeted and singled out because the code enforcement officer was allowing the restaurants to have this excess signage, and yet they were pursuing him and requiring him to remove the signage from his building. My recommendation is, and my response was that if the city's going to relax the sign ordinance as far as temporary signage or size of signs, it should be done on a citywide basis and applied to all businesses. What I suggested doing was that either the code officer or Cheryl's volunteer to put together a letter, send it out to the businesses that are currently in violation with their excess signs. Let them know that their signage is, under normal circumstances, would not be permitted under our sign ordinance, but given the situation and everything going on right now, the city is understanding, the city is not going to be currently enforcing sign ordinance violations, but that at an agreed-upon date after all of the restrictions are lifted, or whatever date is agreed upon, that the expectation would be that those signs would be removed and that enforcement would proceed if the signs were not removed.
That's good. We're an understanding city. I mean, we appreciate businesses that are licensed and are operating as a business, but he is not a business. He is not licensed right now, is he?
So, it's two things. Let's just keep up with one, trying to explain to Saleem what was going on. So, the first thing is about the signage only, because it's, what, three different things with this situation, if I'm not mistaken. So, the first thing, Saleem, is with the signage and the increase in signage. And so, because we had agreed about allowing Panera, I think Vintage Village, I'm not sure of Happy's Pizza, but you know, the different restaurants that are open, like for example, the one I saw today.
Jagged Edge.
Jagged Fork. Not the van, not the van. Jagged Fork has a huge sign that's covering their front window. So, I just, Jill had responded and said that the idea of allowing the signs for now and then taking, you know, giving a two-week period for them to come down, I think that that's fair. And I just, you know, it's not to vote on it, but I just wanted, you know, some, you know, feedback from you all. So, that's the first section, Saleem. The second one.
Can we just talk that one through before we go on to the others?
No. So, as I was saying, I was just joking.
You do how you want, that's fine.
I'm just joking. I was just, you know, I wanted to show I was in charge for one second.
Oh, okay. No, go ahead with my comment.
I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
So, I have two suggestions, or two comments, I guess. One is, I guess this goes, well, I guess to everybody, I guess. Is, can we put a caveat in the letter? One thing that I'm finding frustrating is, you know, for example, with Panera, they've got, you know, over a dozen signs out there, and they're all over the place. They're lying on the ground, they're in the ditch, some of them are in the ground like they're supposed to be. And, you know, I walk by there every day, and there's always, you know, Panera employees in the parking lot delivering food out, and I've mentioned something to them, you know, just casually, said, "Hey, you know, you got four of your signs down, and one of them's in the ditch." And that's, I think I've mentioned it four times in the last week, and they haven't done anything. So, can we maybe position the letter that, you know, to say something to the extent of, you know, while we're being, you know, relaxing our standards, you know, to, you know, allow you to alert your customers in this trying time, yada, 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 in return, we would like you to keep your, you know, parking lots and your signage in order, you know, pick up trash, that kind of thing, to, you know, kind of a pre-d quote.
Pre-pro quote.
So, that's my first comment. And then my second comment is, any chance we could make that, you know, the grace period after we pull this back, maybe a week? Two weeks seems a little bit long to me. And so, those are my two comments.
Okay, let me finish my comment. So, regarding the sign, I would agree with Scott that there should be a grace period, provided that companies, businesses are correctly licensed and are operating as a business. If he was still a jewelry company, I would not have any issues with the signs he had before the cash, gold, cash signage. But he went out of business. He's officially out of business, and now all of a sudden, we see this, you know, "cash for gold" sign. I don't think it's appropriate. That's my thoughts on it. Give companies, businesses, a grace period that are licensed, and let's move on, because I think we've been more than patient. I'm sorry, we're not picking on him, but this is not a pawn shop, and he doesn't, his definition, the definition of a pawn shop based on the email, yeah, he doesn't meet the criteria, but still, the signage is inappropriate.
Well, I think we're going to get to that, because there are a couple other outstanding issues.
Right, so that's why I'm trying to break it down in the three. So, the signage, if you were a business, like a licensed business, is appropriate.
Yep.
So, that's why I want to break it down into threes. So, going back to the first part of allowing the signage, maybe two weeks is long, because it shouldn't really take that long to do. So, what would you think is an appropriate amount of time?
A week sounds, I mean, a week even seems long, but I think a week is fine.
Okay.
A week is appropriate, yes.
Okay, so, for that part, Cheryl, for our businesses that are open, to send out the letter, you know, kind of stating exactly what Bruce was saying, but they have a week once this is released to remove the signages.
Okay.
Okay, the second part of it is, we don't have pawn shops in Lathrop. That's the second part, right?
Well, we don't have pawn, pawn shops are not permissible in the MX district. So, right now, that, his business, his building is located in the MX district. So, his, by his own description of what he's doing, taking jewelry as collateral for cash, even though he indicates he is not charging interest, that he's agreeing to repay, he's agreeing to return the items that are held as collateral at the exact same price that he has provided them in the cash advance. That, by its very definition, is a pawn shop. He is loaning money and using jewelry, gold, gems, precious metals as collateral. So, that, by definition, under the state statute, does require, or one, it does require that he have, in addition to having a business license, he also has to be registered with either the local governmental unit and/or the local police agency to operate that type of a business. The rationale behind that is if police department gets a report of a stolen necklace, and they go to that business and say, "Hey, has anyone shown up?" "We understand you operate a business that holds jewelry as collateral. Has anyone shown up and brought this item in?" And then they have, there's certain accounting requirements that they have to meet to be in compliance with that act. So, he would have, one, he would have to get a business license, two, he would have to register this business under that act with the police department. My understanding, and I think Cheryl, Suzie confirmed this, but he has done neither of those. And then lastly, that particular parcel is not, the zoning is inappropriate for that type of use. So, he could, there's a couple different mechanisms. He could apply for a rezoning, he could file a use variance request with the zoning board of appeals, or he could try and take advantage of our new planned unit development ordinance and get some zoning relief under that mechanism. So, my recommendation, I think initially would be, because the business license is a relatively, I mean, he could say, "I'm operating a jewelry store again. Give me my business license. I'm going to put my sign up," and then put, you know, "try me on the rest of this stuff," which is what I suspect will happen. But I think it should be approached from a code enforcement standpoint, that he's currently not licensed, that his use is not appropriate, or his proposed use, because I think he indicated in his correspondence that he hasn't gone live with this yet. So, that, I think that needs to come from either Kelda or Jim right now, that his current, what he's proposing to do doesn't fit, and that he's not appropriately licensed right now for that, so.
But what does that mean? I mean, is it kind of like a cease and desist kind of thing, or do not open? Or does he get to just basically operate that business until this is all, you know, he gets cited by Kelda or Jim, and he gets to continue to operate until this is all hashed out through planning commission and so forth?
No, I mean, he can't operate, he can't operate until he has the appropriate approval. So, if he's defiant on that, I think, again, you know, it's kind of a difficult time right now, because we can't, it's, Southfield District Court's not operating right now, so any enforcement actions or tickets that are written are just going to sit there until they open back up. Circuit court is still, we could get an injunction.
But, because I don't have some of the information that was sent around, but did we already request or suggest to him to felt that he needed to get a license to, and a license to operate? Did we already take that route? I apologize if you've already...
No, he, so this, the licensing came up in response to this, to Jim Wright's, excuse me, in response to his attempt to regulate the signage that's currently on his building, as well as removing some construction debris that was in the parking lot. He removed the debris and said, that's basically said, "That's all I'm going to do. Any more attempts to harass me," in his usual defensive manner. But that, you know, he expanded on what he was doing and why the sign was necessary, and his statements and the information he provided kind of shed light on the additional violations.
Okay.
Going on on that property. So, I wasn't aware.
Either way, he did not have a license right now, right? His license have not been renewed.
Correct. Ian's accurate. When he went out of business, he let his license lapse. His are now, and I, again, Suzie or Cheryl could probably fill in the details on that, but I don't think he renewed it as of...
He hasn't had a license for at least the length of time that I have been here. So, and I would say that since renewals were sent out last year based on a previous list, he probably hasn't had one for at least three years. Okay.
He's been going out of business for about four years.
So, that makes sense. So, you're, for the second one, something needs to be sent to him about needing, reiterating the fact that most businesses in Michigan need to have a business license.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, yeah, not most, but all.
I'm just, I'm being nice. I'm being extremely nice.
And under our ordinance, I mean, it's perfectly clear. You know, he was very straightforward that he initially, in his correspondence, he said, "Initially, I was going to close this, and I'm opening a different location, but because there's such a need in Lathrop Village and the surrounding communities, and I'm such a kind of person..."
And because somebody on the council also needs to use them. Don't forget that part.
Yeah, that he, you know, he's going to, he's going to open this business up for the president. So, that's, you know, his own admission is that he intends to continue to occupy that until the building's either sold or released, and he intends to utilize it as a business. Now, there are some exceptions to that registration for, if he solely is using that, if he's solely operating online, and there's no physical, he's not accepting people coming into his store, if he's either strictly advertising online, and then he himself or sending an employee to pick up the merchandise, then he doesn't have to register, he doesn't need that additional certificate of registration with the police agency. But there is, there still is, by that definition, he's still operating a pawn shop, so he would still have to get the appropriate zoning approval, and he would just still need a general city business license.
Yeah. Interesting.
So, the letter that needs to be, the second letter that needs to be sent out, separate letters, same letter?
No, I think, I mean, typically, and Kelda, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you or Jim send out a code enforcement letter, you would usually identify all the issues in one correspondence.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so then, hold off, we got one more for you. Or did we do all three of them in one?
What?
What's the third?
I was just making sure that...
We did too.
I had brought up whether or not we could just put, you know, with regard to the trash letter that goes out to the, I'm sorry, with regard to the sign letter that goes out to the businesses, whether or not we could put, you know, something in there saying, you know, "We're being lenient, but in return, we'd like you to keep your property up and your signs, you know, from blowing all over the place," you know, something to that regard.
No, I'm talking about just the one going towards Mr. DiMaggio's place. There was three items with his, and so I was just wondering, what was the third thing? And I think it was, the first was the signage, which is going to everyone to say XYZ, but to him specifically, he has two issues. One, that he was in a zone.
MX.
I was getting it out. MX zone. It's okay. A zone that doesn't allow for pawn shops. And then the second one is that, or no, actually, the first one should actually be business license, and the second one should be the pawn shop.
Yeah, and I would suggest, and I, Kelda, if you want to write the letter, I'll be happy to take a look at it, but I would utilize his wording that using and holding precious metals, jewelry as collateral, that use requires special, it's not permitted in the MX district under our zoning ordinance, and that would require one of those mechanisms that I described to presumably be legal. But I think I could speak for Joe in saying that I would not recommend rezoning, I would not recommend utilizing use variance, and I don't think we want this to be our first PUD.
No. We got somebody else lined up for that. Okay, so, I mean, is everyone good with that? Because I just wanted to quickly talk about, because I really want to put that one to bed, seeing that I don't want us to get charged $350 an hour to discuss it with them. So, that was the other part of the letter that you all are probably not shared with. So, if he's disturbed again, it's $350 that he's going to charge to the city.
Really?
Nice. So, we're all good with that? Send that out. We can have, or ask Kelda to draw that up?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelda. Okay, now I will shift it over to, because you're right here on my screen, to Cheryl.
Okay. All right, we're here to have the, a more in-depth discussion in regards to the budget. And I don't know if you want any of the materials on the screen, or if everyone already has a copy, and you can just see it in front of you, so I don't, whichever way you prefer.
If you just let me know which one it is, I mean, if everybody's good with not sharing it, that's fine, but if you just let us know which one we should be looking at first, because I have quite a few up.
We can go to the one that's more like a memo-style discussion topics.
Okay.
And Kelda's online, she volunteered to help facilitate the meeting and the public comment, should there be any.
Do we have any attendees besides me?
We do not, wait a minute. Nope, we don't.
Nope. Okay.
It's just Scott, Chief Scott, Annie, but... Which did we have on the screen? Was that said already?
We don't have them on the screen. This is where they'll just open it up.
Okay, he's, okay, thank you. Yes, that one. So, did you want that on the screen?
I'm going not. I mean, I have it up already.
Okay, all right, we're good. All right, so, to just reiterate, in terms of what we're expecting, in terms of our revenue sharing, the documents that we've received had indicated approximately a 2% increase, but the communications since then, from all sources, including Simcoch, are projecting potentially a decrease as high as 20% to 30%. So, it's very much an unknown, and when that would take effect is an unknown.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What document are you on? Are you on the, you're not on the CIP project log. Which one are you on?
That, the one that's on the screen right now. At least I see it for Bruce.
Oh.
It's the memo 2020 proposed budget for 27, 2020.
It was in the email that went out? Or the agenda?
Sunday, 8:05 PM.
The one that has the, says, has all the word, the bold letters of note on it to call our attention to stuff?
Are you there?
Her mic is off right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got it, thank you.
Okay, all right, so just to let you know that what we did was budget as a status quo in regards to the revenue sharing. And just, I wanted to get some direction from council, if you're okay with moving in that direction for the time being.
So, what happens if they do do a, you know, so we approve this budget, and, you know, a month later, two months later, they come down and they say, "We're taking 30% off." We just do budget amendments and figure out how to cut, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, personally, I'm fine leaving it flat, or if we want to do, project a little bit of a decrease, that's fine too.
Okay.
Bruce speaks for all of us. I'm just joking. Just kidding.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it also.
I am too.
Okay.
And Saleem, he knows.
And I... I neglected to include as one of the talking points, the maintenance for the House in the Woods property that was mentioned, I believe, by Ian, in regards to at least considering that, and I didn't know if that's something you wanted to budget for, what level of maintenance you were discussing.
Um, so, I mean, I know it was towards Ian, so excuse me. I don't know if it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ian, to budget towards it or to have a discussion of what we were going to do with the House in the Woods?
We were going to discuss, I don't think it was an issue to add it to the budget. We were going to discuss.
I think when we talked about it last, there were, there were two things, Kelly. One was, as Ian said, what we're going to do with the property, and then we also got into a brief conversation about, you know, how should we be maintaining it? And I think what we said at that part of that conversation was that we should be doing the least amount of maintenance possible, just, you know, not cutting back thicket and stuff like that.
Right, right.
Possible, and that's it.
Right. Right, yeah, we're on the same page with that, not going through and getting rid of everything, just as minimum as possible, maybe closer to all the backyards. I think we needed to at least assess how bad it was and figure out what's the, what's the minimum we could do.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing is there is a desire to have some maintenance, so if that's the case, that's not budgeted for.
So, you're saying we should budget for it, and if you're saying that, did you actually put it in the budget? I didn't hear that last part.
She didn't put it in the budget yet. That's what she was asking if we should. And so, my question is this, is that that's not just regular, I mean, I don't think we should go over and above maintenance for this. I'm thinking that that should be regular
DPW.
Yeah, city owners.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Would that be an additional cost for us, you know, to have DPW go out there and do some minimum, minimal maintenance?
Don't they do it now?
No.
They don't cover it now?
No.
They should hope, didn't they?
It wasn't in the last contract. It wasn't, it's, it's...
Oh, it wasn't signed.
It's R1. It's classified as that, so why would they, they wouldn't cover it?
I got it, okay. So, we would have to add that and see, we have to take care of it minimally, as Bruce said, so.
What's the quote? I'd say, let's get a quote.
Well, I mean, the DPW will still, and I don't, and I don't want to speak for what they're doing or not doing, but whether it's, regardless of what it's zoned, Ian, they will, they will still maintain it. Most of our parks are zoned R1 right now, so if it's city-owned property, which it currently is, there's no zoning limitation on what they can maintain or not.
All right.
So, there's, you know, if there's grass to be cut there or other maintenance issues, that they can, they can attend to that without any, as part of their normal contract to maintain city property.
Okay.
Right.
So, I can check with them. I'm not familiar with the degree in which the property needs maintenance. I know sometimes you have to bring in larger equipment, depending on how much brush is there, so, but I can work with them to find out. depending on how much brush is there, so, but I can work with them to find out if they're able to do it, and will they be able to do it under their existing contract.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of maintenance, I mean, the only thing I was thinking was basically just to keep that driveway open, so that a truck, you know, can get in there, you know, if the lot catches on fire, a fire truck has to be able to get in there, and, you know, other than that, I don't think we really should be doing any maintenance of it.
Yeah, and I, and I think previously that was what was discussed, was all, maintaining ingress and egress for the police department, just so they can check to make sure that there are no trespassers, or no, no other criminal activity going on back there.
Okay.
But yes, the, the major brush removal, stuff like that, previously, the council had allocated $5,000 a year line item in the budget, and then if, there was one group that, I can't remember when they disbanded, Kelly, you probably remember better.
Yeah.
Or Pam, but, uh, you know, they were doing some work, requesting some reimbursement, and it was just a lot of chaos and confusion, and so ultimately, council took that line item out, and it's been as it is for, for a while now.
Village Preserve.
Yeah, Village Preserve, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree with, with Scott and Bruce, I mean, whatever we had agreed to before, just make sure that there are no trespassers, make sure police car can get back there just to check, and that's it.
Okay. All right, then we can move on to the government services.
Yeah.
The major highlight there is the salary for staffing. If you recall from last year, we were anticipating a, a 4% increase each year going forward. However, anticipating that there were going to be some belt tightening, especially this year, I originally thought it would be 3%, but you have recommended to you is actually a 2% increase. And again, partly based on performance evaluation, and the other being essentially a cost of living. But I also shared with you what additional increases would represent, so the 2% increase, just for the administrative staff, so this is not including the police department, is $8,860, if we were to go to 3%, is a little over $13,000, and if we were to go to the 4%, is 17,700.
It's reasonable, 2%. Given the state of affairs here.
Yeah, I think we have to do that right now.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's based on, um, just, um, Howard, but the certainty revenues 3% was originally proposed, so that's not based on any performance evaluation, that's just a, a general increase, correct?
Actually, it's based on both, so if it's going to be 2%, there will be 1%, that's a, a basic standard cost of living, and 1% that's based on performance.
Thanks.
So, just going off of what was just said, though, so it is up to a 2% increase, because not necessarily, if it's based off of performance, then not necessarily everyone will get that additional 1%, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to, so, it's possible it could be less than the 88 60.
Correct.
Okay.
Hypothetically speaking, and a question, so, let's just say we bounce back in Q4, not back to normal, but close to normal, and then obviously, 2021 would bounce us over to the normal levels that we left. Do you think that it's still reasonable to give the 2%, or do we want to put any kind of rider in there, saying if, if we're closer in Q2, back to, you know, let's say we're 3% off the, the standard where, where we, we lost all the, the revenue? Would it, would it be appropriate to put that in there?
Where would the revenue come from? Where would the additional revenue come from a, a, at that point? Right, unless, unless, unless we budget for less shared state revenue and Act 51, oh, that would be Rose, but, and at the end of the year, they give us more, then we would have more to do it, but, you know, the passing of balanced budgets, so we'd have to have revenue for that.
Right. Anybody else?
Yeah.
I think personally that.
I agree with the 2%, I do agree with what, what's recommended now, up until, you know, and then review it again next budget year, to see what we are.
I mean, if, you know, one, one possible solution, Ian, is if, if, uh, you know, if, if, if the economy does go back to normal next year, then maybe we can look at, you know, making it up to P.
Yep, making it whole in 21 22.
Yeah, that's what I meant when I just said, let's, let's make it whole in 21 22, and leave it, and just settle for what it is now, so, that's where I was going.
All right, I just didn't want to leave it off the table, because there's a strong possibility we could come close to bouncing back in Q2, Q4. Thank you.
I like your optimism.
I like that thinking, Ian, I do, let's do it.
And the other item that had a note relative to it was the vehicle expense, which is mostly the car, the car reimbursement that the city administrator receives, and in better times, I may have asked for something, but in light of what's going on, I'm just saying that we hold that flat.
Ah, that's so nice.
Yeah.
We were, we weren't taking that out of the budget anyway, um, so. Just kidding.
It's a little hard to take the smart bus these days, because they have limited service.
Yeah.
Well, I can put, I can put Plexiglas in my car and pick you up, and drop you off, and give you eight hours and drop you back home.
I said, be careful, Ian might give you a bird scooter.
Hey, listen, I own my own scooter now, Scott.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay, sorry.
Very scary.
I'll give one to Ian, we're going to race.
Oh, no. Thanks for that visual, Donna.
So, the next section is the general fund administration, the part-time code enforcement position is reflected in that budget. What is not reflected is the assistant and/or grant writer, and you had asked for some costs, so assuming a $25 an hour, that's about $30,000 for a part-time position. So, that is not presently reflected in the budget.
And what, what are you defining, just out of curiosity, as part-time, how many hours a week?
I did it based on, I think it was just over $1,000 hours a year. Four times 2,080.
Oh, about 20 hours, is this 20 hours a week?
Yeah.
A little, a little less. Did we, I thought we talked at one time of, of having a consultant that, um, also for the grant writing would get compensation for percentage if we got the grants, did you go that route as well?
I think we talked about that in our discussions, but I don't think we ever settled on it, Donna.
Yeah, I think that that's another thought, since we can't put it in there, so I didn't want that to, you know, leave us either, that idea, because some, some of them do work at that, with that type of compensation.
But is that for somebody that's specifically a grant writer, or someone that is an assistant, um, assistant city administrator?
I guess I'm thinking that if we don't have the, if we don't have it in the budget, if we cannot put it in the budget, then that's an alternative, I guess I was thinking that, that way, because it's not in the budget as of yet.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay.
We don't put it in the budget. Although I would like to, if we could, try to get it in the budget somehow, because.
It's a moneymaker.
Cheryl works too much.
I agree.
I had to yell at her last night to go to bed.
I agree.
But were you talking to her?
Yeah, email.
But I agree, we should try to work something in. You know.
I must have been wrong, I'm joking. Oh, my goodness.
So, I guess my question for you, are you saying to put something in now, or to wait to some later point, perhaps January, and then, then do a reflection on if we can afford an amendment?
Well, I mean, what if, again, you know, it's, it's hard, because, you know, we're already $180,000 in the hole, um, but as I say, what, I mean, would, I mean, if, that's based on 20 hours a week, what if, what if we did 10 hours a week, would that, I mean, once we got a person up to speed, I think that would still help for you, wouldn't it?
Once they were up to speed, yeah.
It might be hard finding somebody that wants to work 10 hours a week, though.
Right. Uh, you, you might, might find an MBA student or something, who, who's, you know, in a public, public school administration or something, who's looking for part-time work, I, I'm just trying to think outside the box, because, you know, balancing the fact that, you know, our budget is already in the hole, and the fact that Cheryl needs somebody.
Right.
And if you're going to look for somebody, and, you know, with, unfortunately, with the, with the temperature as it is now, there are a lot of people that are laid off, there are a lot of people who are looking for, um, income, and they may be looking forward for the rest of the remainder of the year, so it's a thought, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree, that that might be what we talked about before, for internships, kind of, maybe.
Those are hard to try, though. Try the 10 hours, see what happens.
I literally looked down and see someone asking me for a job, so I'm just.
I mean, we, I mean, I guess, you know, we're going to have a couple more meetings, right, so, I mean, maybe put 10 hours, figure out, you know, for 10 hours, and put it in there as a placeholder, and then, you know, we can make some final decisions to.
Right. Yeah.
So, that came up, that's approx, I mean, so that's approximately half, so about $15,000.
Yeah.
So, do you want that in there, is, I guess that's my question.
Yes.
I say yes.
Placeholder.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right, then moving to public services, the sidewalk program. It's presently presented in the budget as about $20,000 in expenses and $20,000 in revenue. So, I just need direction on if that's what you want to move forward with.
Good with that. I mean, it's money we're getting, it's, you know, we, we put the money upfront, but we get reimbursed for it, so it's, it's.
Kind of a no-brainer. We get reimbursed for it, yeah.
Yeah, go.
I say, oh, yeah.
How long are you going to put it for reimbursement, is it going to be a four-year reimbursement, a year reimbursement? I mean, because if we do a special assessment on that, they get up to 10 years, right, Scott?
That's right.
So, I mean, we're putting the money up front when we're in a negative balance right now, and if they're going to go out 10 years on that.
How, how did it, I mean, Scott, how did that work, I mean, I know a special assessment can go up, up to 10 years, but in prior sidewalk programs, it hasn't been a 10-year payback, I think it's been either a three or a four, wasn't it?
I think it was four.
Yeah, it's, however, the assessment is presented to council for approval, so Pam's right, they have you, I guess, the question is, who's going to present it, is it going to be something that the city generates, and then sets a timeline, or is it going to be something that we're going to have the businesses make a request for how long they want to space it out, so. Yeah.
For talking purposes, what if we threw out three years, four years seems a little long, but.
So, then, we should reduce the revenues to about $7,000 to reflect that only one third, third of that is going to be recouped, be recouped in the first year.
Yeah.
Well, do you think that, do you think the $20,000 expense is accurate? Do you have any idea?
No idea. We'd have to go back, that's, that was the number that was used so many years ago, but I don't know how many exact number of flags and what the current rate is, we had a quote, but in this climate, things are changing in very odd ways, so the price could go up, it could go down if they don't have enough work.
Now, when, Pam, when, when we've done this in the past, and, and allowed people to pay back over three years, there, there's a fee for that, correct? I mean, each year they get assessed a, you know, for lack of a better term, a finance fee, is that correct?
There's an administrative fee.
Right, okay.
I think, no, we, I think we got to be somewhat in the ballpark on that expense side, because if it's, it's $100,000 expense, then we're only getting, you know, 33 in year one, and one, two, and three is a big difference, right, between, different, a lot different than 20,000 and seven. So, do we know, is there a way to know is 20,000 reasonable for what needs to be done? I guess it is based on what, what was the, the expense last time, is that how, that's how we got the number?
For the business corridors, so that is the number the last time, so that was the basis for coming up with it.
Maybe we should raise it a little.
And what year was that? 2006?
That sounds about right.
Maybe we should raise it to 30,000 or something like that, and, you know, use 10,000 for revenue. Because it's going to be more than 20, just because of, you know, cost increases, right?
I mean, it's, I, it, I think it's hard to estimate, you're right, Salim, I, I don't know, it's hard to estimate, because, I mean, we don't know, you know, you don't know what percentage of people are going to opt for doing it via special assessment versus businesses that are going to just say, all right, well, we'll just get our own, you know, contractor to, to do this, and, I mean, we probably have a sense of how many flags, because I think, well, I know we did, they probably, probably have to give it a second look, but, you know, I, we, we did do a first pass, and so we probably have a sense of the number of flags, so can probably get a, a better ballpark, just by doing some simple math.
Okay.
But for sure, it's above 20.
So, I think what I heard was a recommendation of 30,000 in expenses and 10,000 in revenues for that first year, and see if we can try to get a more precise number, if possible.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, layup services. Let's see, last year, if you recall, they received the, the same increase as our staffing, and they also added additional staff person. So, they did ask if they could get a cost of living for this year. The total, um, contract is about 396,000 a year. Looking at a, the current budget that was presented has a 1% increase, which is just under 4,000, a 2% increase would be just under 8,000. And those costs are spread over the five funds, general fund, local, and major roads, and the water and sewer fund. So, I just wanted some direction from you, on if you wanted to keep it at the 1%, go to the 2%, similar to what staff is having, or, or what.
They send us anything?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
Did they send us anything, or a request for?
It was a verbal conversation.
What's currently in the budget?
They wanted three, right?
You have, I thought they, I thought it was three, yeah, two, what's currently in the budget now?
The 1%.
1%, okay.
I think the 1% is appropriate for now.
I do, too.
And then try to make up as we stay with the staff, if we see we're getting back to normal.
Okay. Okay. Then we can move on to recreation. That one is truly a department that's in flux under the current situation in terms of events, programs, the community room. The one thing I did want to draw to your attention is that the fitness center, we have a contract for probably about half of the equipment pieces down there, and that's coming to an end, in order to renew is $5,000, I believe, a year for the equipment, which is only used by literally a handful of people, it, it didn't seem to be the most prudent use of our dollars at this point to enter into a new contract at the present time. So, I just want to make sure you're aware that my recommendation is to not renew that contract, so that is a savings of 5,000.
So, when, it's, in that contract, that's for repairs, and for possible replacement, or what is that?
That's the replacement, so that would replace half of the equipment that's down there.
So, that, so there would still be something down there for.
Correct.
The residents to work out.
Correct.
Okay.
And between, between the lack of use now, and the, just the, not a lot of use, between what Cheryl was saying, I mean, I think it makes sense to.
Yep.
Cut that, and, you know, if things pick up, we look at it again.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, there was nothing new on the building and grounds, you had asked, I don't think I did look up the MS4, what that stood for, but you have it. So, I just wanted to let you know that one of the requirements is the $4,000 added in there to have the city of Southfield do the actual. Southfield do the actual sweeping of the parking lots. Then moving to the general fund, public safety. The officers were planning on going into the trial phase of the 12-hour shift, starting in July after the new year starts, the new fiscal year starts. In their budget, there was also the creation of the sergeant position as well as a full-time officer. I was talking with chief and what we were looking at as a cost savings is to not fill that full-time officer position and use part-time officers, at least for the time being, and give us a chance to see what are the actual costs and hopefully cost savings associated with the 12-hour shift. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Also, I want...
If that's what the chief, yeah, I'm sorry. That's what he recommends.
Yes.
It certainly makes sense, yeah.
And I also want to mention to you, you don't have the charts in front of you, but for the police salary increase, it represents for most of them 1%. It's not that we're recommending a 1% increase, but their increase is going to affect on January 1st. So that's half the year. So instead of budgeting 2%, we're budgeting the 1% because spread over the year, the actual increase is a 1% budget-wise, if you follow that.
Yeah. Cheryl?
Yes.
Just a quick observation. Let me just, I'm, you know, thinking out loud here, and we're talking about staff and public safety. So has there been any discussion regarding providing face masks and/or measuring distance within the office and in addition to some sort of plexiglass shield at the desk to protect staff and/or safety personnel?
We're definitely on top of that. We ordered a shield. It should be arriving this week for the administration counter.
Okay.
The chief has been in touch with Oakland County in regards to getting adequate masks. In fact, he was able to supply the administrative staff with a set of masks themselves with instructions from the CDC as to the care and rotation of those masks. So we have those things in place, and I'm working with Chris in particular in regards to the building and what are going to be the protocols we need to have in the building once we start letting the public in on a more regular basis.
Okay.
So we're looking at all of that.
And was that, did you factor that into the budget somewhere?
There hasn't been any additional cost added relative to that. And hopefully, some of these expenses will be reimbursed through some of the funding mechanisms like the FEMA grant. So we'll be submitting those costs, but going forward, it's hard to anticipate what those costs might be in terms of spacing. That could just be tape on the floor.
Right, right. I was thinking masks, hand sanitizer, that kind of thing, and also protocol to clean the bathrooms with some regularity. I know we are cleaning the bathrooms consistently, but, you know, we're talking pandemic here, so we have to maybe implement some protocol. And what is that going, what is that cost going to be?
Well, you know, that's a good point, that we did not put in additional dollars relative to the overall cleaning of the building on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah. Something to consider. All right, thanks.
Okay. All right. Next, we have major streets.
Park.
Right. And this is where it might get interesting. So I guess the number one consideration is what, if anything, do you want transferred from major streets to local streets?
We going back to the discussion with the 110?
This is why we had, this is why we're meeting today.
Let me, can I say something real quick? Because I did drive Santa Barbara. I don't feel comfortable not doing anything over there, but under these conditions, I'm willing to say, okay, I get it. We can save that money and put it towards 11 mile. I get that. I just really don't feel comfortable not doing anything this year, but I understand where Bruce is going with it, and I suspect Bruce has a plan B, but he hasn't revealed it yet, so.
No, I don't have a plan B, and, you know, and it wouldn't, I don't think it would, I don't think it would prevent us, I mean, it wouldn't prevent us from doing part of Santa Barbara. We would just be able to do less. I mean, right now, we're doing .3 miles. We might only be able to do .15 miles. I guess the way I would turn it around, and honestly, I just wanted to initiate the conversation. I don't, you know, I'm probably, if I had to say my own opinion, I'm probably 52% don't do the transfer, 48% do the transfer. So I'm struggling with it, too. But I wanted to make sure that we were, you know, having a discussion about this. And the way I would turn it around is say, if we did decide to do the transfer, you know, then what we have to think about is what do we give up in the future, right? Because the less money we save means the more money we have to borrow, you know, so if we get two years down the road and we've got to, you know, again, keep in mind, it's probably going to be somewhere in two years closer to 1.5 million, because these are $2,019 that we're talking about in terms of the 1.3. So you've got inflation, you've got increased construction costs. So, you know, if you do, if you talk about us having to take out a $1.5 million bond, you know, we're going to have to pay back $85,000 a year for 20 years. So that's a cost. I mean, there are things that we won't be able to do because that money is going to be tied up. So, you know, by not doing that transfer, then, you know, that bond that we have to take out is going to be $110,000 lower. But, you know, I get it. Santa Barbara, as well as, you know, we've got six other miles of road, or five other mi, well, about six other miles of road that are in the same, you know, category of disrepair. And, you know, if we don't do it, then we fall further behind. So it's, you know, there's not a good answer here, but...
Yeah. Well, I'll throw my two cents in. I'm willing to not transfer it and then see how November goes when it comes to the infrastructure ballot proposal that you're working on.
Well, let me stop you there, Ian. So, you know, we don't know that there's going to be a ballot...
We don't know.
Right.
I mean, we're moving forward, you know, kind of with our December hats on.
Right.
Trying to figure out what makes, what makes the most sense, you know, not taking the economy into account, because we've got four months before we have to pull that trigger if we put something on the ballot. So when we get three, four months down the road, we'll be ready, should the economy be in a good enough state where we think it makes sense to put something on the ballot. Now, do I think that's going to, do I think the economy is going to be in a state? Probably not. But we're moving forward in the small chance that it could be. So I wouldn't count on November, because that's a huge unknown right now. And obviously, we've got to make a decision about, you know, doing the transfer before that. So I wouldn't count on that.
Okay. So I'd like to officially state, I'd plug my nose and say, let's save the money for 11 mile, even though I would really want to get some roads done this year, but I understand the position we would be in later.
I disagree.
Well, let me clarify.
I'm with it. Yeah, I disagree as well. Go ahead.
Let me clarify. So there's really almost two separate parts of the conversation. So the transfer of 110,000 from major streets to local streets was, is primarily what, is what keeping the local street fund from dipping into their fund balance.
Okay.
So if you look at your sheet at the very bottom of page three, it shows revenues for local streets, it's 403, and then expenses, 393. So that 110 is what kept them flush, essentially. So if you take out the 110 from major, they're just going in, it's not just, they're going into the fund balance. So the fund balance will be low. It doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't going to be doing the Santa Barbara project. That's a, that could be modified, but that's not necessarily a part of the conversation at this point.
Okay.
And again, that's assuming that the revenue stays flat from, you know, because a lot of that, on the local side, 130,000 of that revenue is Act 51 money.
Right. So is what I'm hearing from the majority of you to hold off on the transfer from major to local?
No, you heard that from me. No, you heard that, no, you heard that from me, but based on what you just explained, I would say, transfer it.
So I have another question about Santa Barbara. Is the company that did the water main, are they coming back to fix the apron along Santa Barbara? Because as I walked yesterday, it looks like it is, I can't tell you how I measured it, so let me try to figure out, how did I measure how far it was? It was maybe four of my feet from the side of where the road is supposed to be...
Yeah.
...to the road that is totally, you cannot drive down it, you can barely walk down it.
Yep.
Where it's tore up and it starts roughly north of, what is that? Not bungalow, oh, guys, that tipped off my tongue. It's the next...
It's a Saratoga?
The next street before.
I don't know.
Whatever, it's a street that's before where the Keenans live.
Yeah.
But that's where it gets really, like, they did it very neat prior to that, and then it's like, it just went...
Yeah.
...to crap after that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just sent an email to Scott Wrangler to ask him to follow up on that. So we can find out, because I wasn't certain if the remediation should have been the contractor's responsibility, which I would have assumed, but just in case it falls to DPS and they haven't been instructed. But either way, so we can find out what needs to happen to get that cleared up.
Well, and I'm not a street person or a water main person, but the way that this road looks, where I'm talking about, I would really be shocked if the company's not supposed to come back and fix it, because, I mean, it's really, really bad. It's super bad, where you can see the major difference between the north and south and whatever street that is, where it's just kind of like...
Yeah, they started late. It started getting cold.
True. And then, I mean, and I'm not doing this for the record for my own street and corner, but when you get down to La Crosse and Santa Barbara, it is just like, they were like, whatever, we're done, you know, and we're out.
It is bad.
And so I don't know if that's going to, well, it's not going to help it between where we're talking about repairing it. But I do wonder what that would look like, kind of, of what Ian was saying, if you didn't do the full amount, or what was Ian or Bruce was saying?
Well, let me ask this question, Kelly. I guess this is a question of Cheryl. So if we didn't do the transfer and we went ahead and did the work that we're talking about doing, the same project, so that's going to basically take $110,000 out of the fund balance. So that's going to leave us at $253,000 still left in the local fund balance. So if we did that, I mean, is, I mean, is having a quarter million dollars in our local fund, left in our local fund balance uncomfortable from the treasury perspect, from the treasurer perspective? I mean, I guess, you know, we could kind of, I guess, get the best of both worlds. We could save, not do the transfer, save $110,000 towards the future, take $110,000 essentially out of the fund, still be left with a quarter million dollars, and so we would still be sitting good in the local fund. And hopefully, you know, this year or next year, we'll have some type of ballot approval and we'll be able to add to that fund by raising other monies to work on the roads. But, I mean, I guess I'm looking at that fund balance thinking, you know, why can't we do both?
You mean, why can't we do the road and think of how we can get the money back into or increase the amount?
No.
Because that's...
So what I'm saying is, don't do the transfer of $110,000. So that allows us to save that $110,000 in our major road fund, so we've got money for the 11-mile road project when it hits us in two or three years, and still do the regular project that we're, on Santa Barbara, the .3 miles that we said we were going to do. And if we do that, we're going to have to come up with $110,000 because we didn't do the transfer. We can take that $110,000 out of the existing local road fund balance because we have $360,000 in there. So after we're done with the project, we would still have a quarter million dollars in the local fund balance. So if we had a water main break over the winter and we had to do some road work, we still have a quarter million dollars in there, which would more than cover something like that. Why not just do both and get the best of both worlds?
Sure.
Yeah, the usual rule of thumb is in government is that you want to have 17% to 20% at minimum in your fund balance. So even with the 110 not being there, you would hit that mark.
Right. So why not do both then? Pam, any comments on that? Any thoughts?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I mean, do you see a problem with us draining the local road fund balance to where it's down to a quarter million dollars?
No, but you have to remember that the, we don't know what the Act 51 funds are going to be, too. And it could hurt the local or major, or it could hurt local. I'm not sure what they're going to be.
Right. But even if, even if they say they take, you know, if they do the maximum that they were projecting and drop it by 30%, that's only just taking another $20,000, $25,000 out of that fund. So we still have plenty of money in there.
Right. And I do know, going back to the restoration of the roads and things like that, when they do the water main projects, they do come back and restore, because they did like the aprons of people's driveways coming in. They have to restore those, either if they're concrete or if they're blacktop, those have to be restored. They always have to wait, though, for the settling, because that's where we get into the problem. And that's why most people don't get their, the restoration done until the spring, because it's got to settle.
Good point.
We would be back out there doing it again. So, because we had that problem with, oh, I can't think of the street, but they were calling all the time because it wasn't being done. But theirs was a late project in the fall, and then we had to wait till the spring. And actually, theirs probably didn't get done till about June because it settled, so...
I think it was a Keenan's.
What?
I think it was a Keenan's.
Correct.
Yeah, it was the end of the driveway. They're still not happy with you, Pam. I'm just joking.
I do like that alternative, though.
Yeah.
To move it out of the local funds for now, especially if, because what Cheryl said, that we're still at the recommended amount that we should have. So I definitely think that's a great, great idea to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should do that.
Yeah, it's a good compromise.
Me, too. That is a good compromise.
Kelly, it wasn't that bad.
No, it wasn't. Well, we looked, but we talked it through, though, right?
We did.
Instead of everyone just saying, what?
I agree. Last week, last week, I was so uncomfortable because I was, you know, it was like, either you do this or you do that, you know? There was no, like, in-between there.
But we talked it through last week. We would all be at home right now.
I was losing sleep.
Just kind of going out.
I get it, but I feel good about it. Thank you.
Good, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, so next, on local streets. So we have taken out the 110 from the major. And there is also the transfer in of the 1 mil from the general fund, which equates to about 149,000. So that's still in there, and I just wanted to get your confirmation that that's what you want to do.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yes, yes. Okay, but now we're not transferring into 110, right?
Correct.
That was my understanding, correct?
Right, yeah. Yes.
And on the pages that I sent today, it shows what the mileage breakdown looks like. So you do have that as well, and it reflects the 1 mil in there. Then moving to the water fund, Pam and I have struggled with what to do with this water fund. And there's just basically no way around it between the maintenance costs, the lead and copper requirements for inspections and replacement, and the water main capital project. It's simply going to go up. and the water main capital project, it's simply going to go up. Um, there's no other way to address it. And so we're, we're basically looking at an increase of about eight percent. Maybe a little bit closer to eight point something percent for the water bills. So if your water bill's fifty dollars a month, you know, that's just under five dollars, which doesn't sound like a lot, but, um, for our residents, um, they definitely feel increases in the water bill we hear, we get the call, so, um, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
I'm just glad that you're doing it and not the infrastructure committee and that you beat us to it. That way you can take the flak instead of us.
But, um, and, but I also asked Scott Wrangler to look at the financing options available to us because this five hundred thousand dollars a year, we, we can't just do a pay as we go going forward. I don't think our residents can afford those increases, so if we can look at some financing options, it might make more sense on the long term. But at least for this year, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and we, and truth be told, we, we have not, you know, we, we've talked at the beginning of the infrastructure committee about, you know, ideas of what to do about the water, water system, you know, Scott, Scott's, Scott's recommendation, Scott Wrangler's recommendation is, we need about a half a million dollars a year moving forward every year to get the, you know, the system in, in, back in shape, and so we kind of talked about a little bit in terms of, you know, cost and how we might do that, and a lot of it was through the water rate. Um, but, um, honestly, we never got there because we've been focusing, we, we wanted to tackle that after the roads, and we were hopeful that we would have been done by the road, with the roads by now, we would have moved on to it, but, um, it's still on our radar, but, um, you might, you might get there first, or maybe we need to talk about moving it up on our agenda and so forth, but just want to make that comment.
And also within the water fund, we have been dipping into the fund balance with that account for a couple, for quite a few years now. We have not balanced our revenues and our expenditures, so.
And that is, that will remain, even with the eight percent increase, that's going to be true for this coming year as well. Um, there will be a slight dip into the, um, the fund balance even then. So it's offset to a certain degree by the sewer fund, because it's in pretty solid footing. Um, but just so that you recognize, we're not in a healthy state yet relative to the revenues to support the water system.
And Cheryl, um, what, I mean, do you, what, I mean, do you, can you talk at a ten thousand foot level what our plan is? I mean, I know we, we've got, uh, twenty thousand dollars in here to, um, begin assessing lead and, and, and copper water lines. Um, what, what, what's the plan for that? I mean, because I know we're on the hook for any repairs that we do find, um, what, what are we, what, what are we, you know, what's that twenty thousand dollars? Um, what, what's that program look like? Do you have any idea yet, or are you still just kind of figuring it out?
Trying to figure it out. Um, we've started the initial round, which includes looking at our existing records and filling in that gap, and then we'll have to figure out, so who else do we need to assess, um, having residents involved in it and trying to do some of their self-evaluation of their systems, which isn't the most reliable, but at least it gives you some idea. And then we've also, um, are working with SACWA relative to the replacement itself. They're contracting with them, um, at least they're letting out an RFP for a contract for the actual replacements, so hopefully it won't be as costly as if we, um, we're trying to bring in someone on our own to do it.
Right, of course, the scary thing is, is not knowing what the quantity is.
Yes.
We got the cost per down, but we don't know what our quantity is.
Right, right, well, I think we're relatively fortunate, because it seems as though there isn't a lot of lead lines in, in life of us opposed to some other communities, so, but yeah, it's the great unknown right now.
Thank you.
If there aren't any questions on water and sewer, then the capital improvements, um, is, under administration, it's called monitors, and that's essentially up on the second floor to have, um, the actual screens, I guess, uh, on the walls, instead of having to pull out the PowerPoint and hope that it works and we have an internet connection and the wiring associated with that, so that would be in the council chambers, the conference room, and I believe there will also be one in what we call the meeting place. So that they will all have that technology available to them. The tasers is an annual cost for the police department, um, as we're rotating, um, in the new ones. The parking lot at DPW, that's a big one, but it's been on the radar for a few years and it's in pretty bad shape. So that's in there, and the park investment, that's a number of programs within recreation, including establishing a, um, community garden and some other enhancements to some of the parks. We try to keep it at a minimal, but also to do some things to, um, try to help, um, stabilize and improve our park system. And the community gardens also there, set eight thousand.
Just one observation, um, regarding capital improvements. Do you think we should seriously consider investing in a new council desk on the second floor? Because I don't see how we're going to maintain six feet apart per council person at that desk.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know that we need a new desk, other than a new process, right? I mean, we could just spread out across the room or something like that. Um, because I mean, hopefully, this is going to be a temporary situation, you know, it won't be more than a year, hopefully.
And it may be that only the five of you sit at that table and staff is, you know, out in the audience section to allow you to spread out more there.
Okay. All right, as long as we have options, I mean, as long as we're thinking about it, so. Oh yeah, Zoom meetings, geez. Okay, just a suggestion, I just was thinking about that when we were talking about monitors, so. Okay, thank you.
What, Pam, what's in the capital acquisition fund right now in terms of dollars?
How much do we have in there?
Yeah.
Twenty-eight thousand.
How much?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, so we would, we would be having to put in, out of our current year's budget, contributing about seventy thousand or so in there to make these
Usually it's a pay-as-you-go, so, there was a little probably left over from my year. Because it's a pay-as-we-go, you can manage capital improvements.
So the fund balance
Let me ask that a different way. Um, so does this, does, does the money that we're spending on, on capital improvements, is, is that contributing to our hundred and eighty thousand in the hole for the, from the general budget this year? Or no, is that a separate, separate account?
No, that's, um, contributing, because we, so we fund the, or the general fund for capital improvements, so.
Okay, so then I'm going to play devil's advocate. Yes, let me play devil's advocate here for a second. Um, so we got a sixty thousand dollar expense for, uh, a new parking lot in the DPW lot, which I know it needs it, but I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, just in terms of throwing this out, I mean, they're all driving trucks anyways. I mean, is that something that we could, we could delay to help our hundred and eighty thousand dollar hole in the budget?
Actually, no, because that has been something that has been on our, um, liability and property pool, um, when they come out every year. It has been something that they have been wanting us to do, and we've been pushing it down the road. And, um, so I think it's going to be costly with the liability and property insurance, because that is something that they have put on their list for us of, um, liability.
Okay, that's fair. I just wanted to play devil's advocate, just looking for ways we can save money where we can, so we had to throw it out and push back a little bit.
Any other comments or suggestions on the capital improvements?
No.
I thought I saw one on something else, on the the project log. Reading is fun. Yeah, it's part of, yeah, it was part of the email she sent out, but reading is fundamental, because there it is, my answer is already right there. It's about hanging flower baskets. I know Suzie wanted me to bring that up just one more time.
So that is part of the capital improvements that the DDA has authorized funding for.
Right, right. I just got, I, I wasn't, the way it's listed, it looked like it was under DPS. DPS, and I'm like, why would that be under DPS? But reading and blowing it up makes all the difference in the world.
Restful people.
I know, and I should have wore my glasses, I first looked at it, but so be it. No, I get it. Makes sense.
So those were the main points that I, I needed feedback from council, and, um, before we do go and, or you ask any other questions you may have, um, Yvette had posted a reminder that the May eighteenth budget session is set for five-thirty, and the council meeting is at seven.
And thus far, we're going to be doing it by, um, well, we'll have to do a TBD of where, if it's going to be Zoom or if it's going to be in chamber, seeing that it's, we'll see what happens.
I'm anticipating it's going to be Zoom. I just saw something that the governor is talking about extending again, so.
Oh, beyond the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Something just popped up on news feed, so.
Okay, I gotta check that.
And then the May eighteenth meeting for the budget session, that's going to be, we can't change any figures at that time, because we're going to be taking it to the council.
Right, that's when you do the act.
So you're saying, from this moment, from this moment, if we have any thoughts or anything, although I think, I think we've combed through it pretty well, but you're saying after tonight, we cannot, um, make any suggestions?
We have the May fourth, you have the May fourth, um, budget session, which is before the, um, special meeting, the council. You do have that, but then after that, we have to put the budget together.
Okay, thank you.
What time is the May fourth meeting start?
That's going to start at six, because that, we don't have an actual meeting. So only on the third Mondays. Is that right?
Starting on the sixth, let me look at my calendar.
No, yeah, I'm saying
Mondays.
Right, on the third Mondays, that's when we'll come in at five-thirty, because we'll need more time. And then because all we have to do is a discussion on the first Monday, which will be the fourth, that's why we start at six.
Don't there a special meeting on the fourth, though? Because, uh, capital improvement or something?
Yes, so that's an actual meeting. And it includes the public hearing for the capital improvement plan. But it's still set for six, I believe.
Okay, that's why I was just going to ask you, I don't see anything that says anything different. Um, okay, I'm trying to look into. Do we have anything else about?
Just a quick question regarding the May fourth meeting, so there's two calendar notices in there, obviously two different ones, one says special meeting, the other one says meeting later, Billy City Council, so we go in on, it's six PM, right? So we're starting at six, right? So we just click on the first one, so obviously the second one we should disregard? Because they're kind of scheduled at the same time, almost. I don't want us to have the Zoom issue we had today and last week.
Are you talking about my issues?
No, I had an issue getting on last week, and you had an issue getting on today, so I am not sure which one is the more accurate.
Then I'll try to clear, I'll send out a reminder that hopefully it'll be clear on which one is the correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, I'm trying to go through my emails and see if there was anything else that needs to
Be brought up.
Well, I don't see anything, is there anything that anyone else has?
Of course, I've got a couple.
I, I'm looking, see, you don't realize, you're over here for me, and I'm looking directly at you, just like, go ahead and
Uh, I had a couple of questions for Salim, I wanted to talk a little bit about the marijuana study group. Um, a couple of questions. First off, do you have a projected recommendation date, where you're going to come up with a recommendation? Because I was kind of looking at the, the timeline, working backwards, and I wanted to see where you thought it was, where, versus where it might need to be.
Before you answer that, did you find out, I know that, when is the date that that sunset ends?
Yeah, so it's, it sunsets on, on September twenty-eighth, which happens to be the date of our meeting, so.
Okay.
And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, you know, I, I believe that once we pass it, it has to be posted ten days before it goes into effect. So we would have to, um, just, just working backwards, um, you know, the, we would have to have our second reading in the August meeting, uh, our first reading in the July meeting. Um, and then that would mean that probably we would need, uh, you know, a recommendation by, by our June meeting, so that we could discuss it, and Scott would have time to write the ordinance. Now, obviously, we could do a special meeting, um, you know, some of those, some of those, if, if, if you needed more time. But, you know, just based on the, the timeline of our meetings right now, it would seem that we would need to, we would need a recommendation by sometime, probably by our, our third week meeting in, in June.
Okay, yeah, so I think initially we would, I was thinking of getting the recommendation by July, but if that's going to be not, you know, not in accordance with the right timeline, then we can move that up to, uh, try to hit it by the June meeting. And if we don't think we're going to, and we're, we're, we're working on it, and we have to see if we can do all our, you know, due diligence and stuff. If, if we're not getting there, then we might ask that we, uh, push that sunset a little bit further, like just a month or two, or whatever is reasonable.
Or we, we could, I mean, theoretically, we could give the committee more time by doing special meetings to do the, the, you know, the first and second reading. Um, but I, I think extending the sunset, though, would be a bigger issue, wouldn't it, Scott?
Extending the sunset's going to require a, a new ordinance.
Yeah.
So you're still going to have two meetings, and you're going to have a publication, it's, it's not, uh, outside the realm of possibility for council to do that, if they wanted to, uh, say, add, if, if, Salim, you get into it and you find there's, there's absolutely no way, we don't have enough data yet, this, uh, because of basically everything shutting down. The information we thought we would have is just not there, so, you know, the justification, if we wanted to say, okay, we're going to put another twelve months, um, hopefully that the economy will restart back up. And we'll be able to see more of the information that we're looking for, to be able to make a, an accurate recommendation. That's something that's possible, council could do that. Again, what, what Bruce is saying is, if you need, if you're close, you need like maybe a month, uh, that July, we could, uh, easily enough to do the first reading at the regular meeting in August, and then make the first meet, the study session in September, a, um, make that a special meeting, and then have the second reading and adoption there. And yes, typically, the, um, effective date is, uh, ten days after publication.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have a good, a better idea after our May meeting, which is May fifth. But it is going to depend on how much, you know, do we have enough good data to make a good recommendation? But my, our initial goal was to have something for the council in July. So if we need, you know, special meetings to, you know, make that hap, to make it work in a timeline, then we can do that, that, that should be fine. But yeah, I mean, you know, we'll do our best to get all the data that we need, you know, we've started on all fronts, so, um, you know, we'll see if we can put it all together.
Okay, just wanted to throw that out there. And then the other, the other thing with respect to the, the marijuana committee is just, in terms of, you know, I, I don't think we've, we've talked about it as a, as a council before, but in terms of, like, what I'm looking for from, from the committee, I mean, the, the, the big questions that I want to know, um, personally, I'm sure you're working on this, but I just want to emphasize this, you know, for me, is, you know, what the residents think, and I know you're, you're working on some type of polling, because, I mean, from, from my perspective, you know, the, the law is settled, um, you know, our, our residents said that they were in favor of it, now obviously that doesn't mean that they want it here.
Right.
Um, so what I'm looking, you know, one of the big things I, I was hoping to get out of the committee was to know, you know, some type of polling, so that, that, you know, I could say, hear that, all right, well, people don't want it, and, you know, because I'm on, I'm, I could go either way. Um, and then the second thing is, is if you guys do, you know, decide to recommend or choose to recommend that we allow it, um, then, you know, the other thing, the other big thing that I would want to hear personally would be how many, um, you know, uh, permits you guys think we should, we should do and, and could, could support, so. Um, I don't think, we've, we've talked much about this, so I don't know what other people are looking for, but I know those are the two big things for me. And since you're getting that committee started, I thought it would be good for you to hear that from all of us of what we're looking at.
I think you're absolutely, I, I think you're absolutely right, because, um, the one thing of feedback that we got regarding the infrastructure because the one thing of feedback that we got regarding the infrastructure committee is, and continue to get, is what do the residents think? So I'm curious also if there's going to be some type of, and I know this might be weird to be in this current environment, is there going to be some type of survey or something to find out? Just, I guess, resident feedback is what Bruce was saying.
Yeah, I mean, those are good points, and glad you brought them up, because we want to hear whatever, what the council wants to see. But those are both on our list. We've got someone assigned to the task of determining what's the best way to get resident feedback, whether it be polls, surveys, or whatever it is. So we have that as a task line item that somebody is responsible for. So that, we'll figure that out, and then the licenses, that's on our list as well. So we've got types of licenses, types of facilities, the different ways to do the business here, what would work, and how many licenses can we issue, should we issue, and the fees that we can charge for those as well. We've already gotten data on some of that stuff already. So those are on our list, as well as things like, you know, obviously, the crime issue. Is there increased crime? What's our, you know, police data show? What other cities' police data show? Things like that. I'm just, I'll just read you some of the items. So that's, you know, the police issue, discussions with other businesses on how they're operating, you know, retail marijuana versus medical marijuana. We're looking at state data, you know, working on other research. So in the end, I think, in the end, for me, it's going to be, you know, obviously, but we're open to all the information. We got to dig up all the information, get all the facts. But it's going to be, you know, is it any increase in crime associated with these things? Is there any danger of that? What's the potential benefits? You know, how much, you know, what's the revenue that is there? What's the potential cost increase? You know, and how can we do it? What types of, there's more than one type of facility. Obviously, there's a few different ways to do these things and run these businesses. And what's the best way to do that? Where should they be in the city? Those kind of things. So we're looking at all those things, and, you know, we've got everyone moving on it. And hopefully, we can get most of the information we need before, in order to make a good recommendation, so.
I'll just, I'll add to, while we're talking about it, I did share it with Saleem. But, so the state was, that was supposed to have adopted a permanent set of rules on how they're going to operate with respect to Lara. That was supposed to be done in January of this year, which they didn't, they missed that deadline. So they extended the temporary rules until July. And I anticipate that that's probably going to get extended again. I don't think that that's going to be finished up by July. So, you know, it's, this whole thing is being spread out, you know, so if you're feeling that you need more time to it, I think it's, the council's well justified in extending that out, providing that opportunity, so.
The other thing we want to do is talk to other cities as well, so we've got that as a task item as well. But, so that's what I'm not sure about, is how quickly that can happen, you know, what's their availability, and things like that. Again, we'll follow up at our next meeting and see how everyone's doing on all the tasks. But we'll work towards getting something recommended. I mean, one recommendation was to put everything off till later, but I think we all decided as a committee that, no, we're not going to do that. Let's move forward and try to come to a conclusion and come to a good recommendation, so.
And then the other thing I had, hopefully, this will not require a whole lot of discussion, and will be very quick, but it's, you know, it's the least favorite subject of everybody.
If you say bumper blocks, I swear.
I won't use that term. But on Monday, when we met, we said, you know, there was a planning commission meeting, and let's see what happens at the planning commission meeting. There really were no alternatives discussed, other than, you know, what we've been talking about for a while, is thinking about an ordinance to allow the properties behind the, the business front to be purchased to make more space for redevelopment. So that's not a near-term solution for the problem that we've been talking about. And so what we had said was, you know, if there wasn't anything that we would reconsider, what we had decided on February third meeting, which was sending out a letter to those five or six businesses, and advising them of the problem, letting them know that it is an issue, and that once, you know, things get back to normal, you know, we will be aggressively ticketing. And so hopefully, that will incite them to either, A, continuously alert their customers not to park on the sidewalks, or B, that they put bumper blocks in on their own. So I'm hoping we can go that route now that we've exhausted the planning commission option. And that's all I have to say on that, so. Anybody have a problem with sending letters like we had talked about in the February third meeting?
So that's just to those four or five addresses that have been identified?
I think there were five or six. I think I sent you the original email a while ago, and then I sent you another one with one more, so. I'm happy to work with you on reviewing that or brainstorming with you, Cheryl.
Okay.
And that should be, that should be the end of the bumper block era. I promise, unless there's something egregious, I won't bring it up.
I highly doubt that that would ever happen. I don't think that you even know how to have a council meeting without saying bumper block.
Well, I hope that it is, because it would mean that the bumper blocks are corrected, and we can ride our bikes and walk and have what we need, the safety that we need, so.
You're here.
Yeah. So can I ask a question? The, and I kind of know the answer, but I'm going to ask anyway. The sidewalk deal that we talked about earlier, does it, does it also include the sidewalks on Southfield Road, or is it just the residential plan?
So the sidewalk program that we approved, I think it was last, probably about three-quarters of a year ago, maybe, was a five-year plan. Year one was specifically Southfield Road, eleven mile and twelve mile. And then year two, three, four, and five will be, one of, each year will tackle one quadrant of the city on the residential side.
So the first, the first go-round is Southfield Road, okay?
Correct.
So that's one of the day, it's some bumps on there that will make you do a willy on your bike, or, you know, if you trip over, it could be very sincere, very severe. And Bruce, you know that already, right?
Yeah, I mean, last week, I literally, you know, I mean, Cora and I are talking while we're walking, and I tripped twice. It could have been catastrophic, but, you know, it happens. I mean, it's that bad. So hopefully, we won't be in this situation a year from now.
Okay, good.
Progress slowly.
Yeah. And Saleem, is there a way that I can get, and I apologize if you sent it, your task list for your committee?
Yeah, sure, I'll send it out.
I haven't, I haven't received anything, and I would appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing. I didn't know if you wanted to schedule a evaluation.
For what?
For her.
That's what I say. My thoughts were, we're having it on Monday. I mean, yeah, that's Monday, right? Or is that just, that's why, it's probably going to be a little bit a longer meeting.
Kelly, are you going to send something out before Monday that we can look at, your, whatever you put together?
Um, I don't normally, but I can. Yeah.
You have everything you need, though, right?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So if you could, I think that that may help.
I can, you know, I'm going to say that that's an idea. I can't promise it, because I have a lot of things on my plate to do now, but, um.
Okay.
I can really try to combine some, yeah, I can try. How about that? I won't.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Even if I send it, would you be okay if I send it on Monday morning?
I would.
Okay, that's fine, yes, I'll, yeah, I'll get it together.
Okay, thanks.
So to answer your question is, um, sorry.
Does she really need a performance review?
Well, that's what I was going to say, but to answer your question, if you put it on Monday's meeting, because we don't have to do any type of action item on it, right? So yeah, we can put it on Monday. That would be good. Monday is the fourth. Can you believe that? Anybody?
I know, it's crazy. Just a quick question. So what's the protocol? You and Bruce will review what you've finalized with Cheryl, and then we go into a council meeting and?
So what I've been doing is just doing a combination of what everybody wrote, and I put it out under one evaluation. I also do our summarization of the three sixties that Cheryl received from some of the staff, and that's, I mean, there's nothing else. We're not giving her a raise, right? I mean, I forgot, she's right here.
I didn't know what the, I didn't know what the protocol was, thanks.
No, I mean, the way that, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I, the way that we've been doing is that you hand them into me, and I do a combination, I just combine all of them together. And, you know, we talk them through.
Yeah, that's how we've been doing them. I agree.
Yeah, so I'll have it to you. I'm going to try very, very hard with all this stuff I have to do, you know. I'm so busy staying at home, that I will try to get it together by this weekend, but the latest will be Monday. Is that okay with you, Cheryl?
That's fine. I just wanted to add that usually, the other part of the conversation is in regards to whatever the compensation package is, if there were to be a discussion along those lines. Normally.
Um, I thought we said that at the very beginning, that there was nothing happening, but.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I know, the Zoom got all, it's getting squirrely, okay, whatever. Um. But I, okay, then, I was alert, and I was paying attention at the beginning. I thought it was so above and beyond. Never mind, that was for staff. Okay, yeah. Talk amongst yourselves. I finally got it together.
All right.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Want to give feedback on what she just asked?
Oh, I'm sorry, that went over my head. I just heard more money. So.
And then I heard crickets.
So.
Why don't we, like, have a discussion with her about it on one of our Friday meetings?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Our NACO, well, I'm guessing we'll have one this Friday, because we've got a council meeting.
That would be YouTube, but that would be YouTube, right?
You made it too easy, Ian.
Yes?
Yes, on Friday between, yeah, between me and Bruce and Cheryl on Friday. Let's plan on having, let me double-check. So, yes, Friday, let's have a meeting. And then you can send out what, I'm looking to make sure that Suzie hasn't put anything on my schedule that doesn't carry over to my phone. Okay, so, nothing's good. So Friday, whatever time, I'm available after ten-thirty.
Works for me.
Or between eight and nine-thirty, whichever you prefer.
Doesn't work for me.
That's May first.
Will you let us know?
Want to do it at eight-thirty?
He just said that does not work for you. Don't fall out.
Okay.
Bruce is always up at six in the morning.
No, he's not.
He hasn't gone to sleep yet.
What about later, like, four o'clock? I actually, I actually do have my board meeting that morning, so it is out for me in the morning. What about maybe like four o'clock?
I'm fine with that. I'm available anytime after ten-thirty.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, anything else? Good of the cause? Do we have anybody that is, like, chomping at the bit to ask a question, Kelda?
No.
No, thank you, I'm sorry. Bruce, I see you're looking at something. Seems like you want to ask a question.
I'm entering it into my calendar, so I don't forget.
Okay, Ian?
No, I'm just curious as to what Cheryl has in mind.
Um, aren't we all?
Please let it be reasonable. That's a.
Well, that implies that you're open to this conversation, okay.
Hey, we're living in the moment right now, so.
Just remember, that's just Ian talking right now. Saleem?
I'm good.
That's Donna.
And I'm good, I'm good. You all have, oh, do we have to make a motion, or we're?
No, no, I was just going to ask if the staff had anything, instead of me going through each person individually.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then we will talk again on Monday, and I hope you all have a good night. I, stay safe.
Yeah.
Thank you. Stay safe, guys.